Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 11th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign up sheets in the foyer for our hearing this evening. One is a sign up sheet if you're speaking this evening, the other is a sign up sheet for attendees of this hearing. In case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding these cases, please sign up on the sheets that are in the foyer. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, and responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Well, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take a note. Thank you for your cooperation, and please silence your cell phones at this time. On our agenda this evening, after review and approval of the minutes from June 13th meeting, our public hearing this evening is number CSP 22-0023 for the Chipotle Charlotte Hall Concept Site Plan. And the action requested this evening by them is a review of a concept site plan for a 2,325 square foot fast food restaurant with a drive through window. This time I'll let the board members introduce themselves, starting with Mr. Hall.
William Hall.
Patty Roback.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe St. Clair.
And Merrell Evans.
Okay, also with us this evening from the county staff, the Director of Land Use and Growth Management, Mr. Bill Hunt, his planner, Brandy Glenn, and Administrative Coordinator, Ms. Kimberly Wood. Also this evening from the Department of Public Works and Transportation, their Director, Mr. Jim Gotch, our Assistant County Attorney, Mr. John Hauser, Amy Carter, our Video Media Producer, and I saved for last, Mr. Andy Balkin from St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, Mr. Balkin. See, I'm still doing it, can't break that habit. Mr. Balkin is getting ready to leave us to move on to bigger and better things. We thank you for all your time that you've spent with us, Andy, and hope the best for you as you move forward.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to review the June 13th minutes? Any corrections, deletions? Do I have a motion to approve?
We approve the June 13, 2022 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Evans. I'll go down and has a written tonight, have written them down. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. St. Clair?
Abstain.
Okay. Mr. Van Kirk?
Aye.
Ms. Roback?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Abstain.
Okay. And I'll also vote for this. Okay, moving right along. Our first case of the evening will be, as I said, number CSP 22-0023 for the Chipotle Charlotte Hall Fast Food Restaurant. Anybody testifying or at this evening for this case, if you'll stand and raise your right hand at this time, I'll get everybody sworn in. I don't think you have to swear. Aren't you the lucky one?
We do, I know. We have an abundance of caution, sometimes I end up testifying.
Well, I'm happy for you to stand, I appreciate that. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Okay, thank y'all. Brandy.
Agenda item one is Concept Site Plan CSP 22-0023 for the Chipotle Charlotte Hall. The Concept Site Plan seeks approval for a 2,325 square foot fast food restaurant with a drive through. The site is located at 300-303 Notch Road, Charlotte Hall. The land use is mixed use, moderate intensity. The zoning is town center mixed use. The regulations for the town center mixed use district provide opportunities for residential and commercial development within town centers consistent with the comprehensive plan. Standards are intended to create an urban character and make the core area safe, pedestrian friendly, and visually attractive. Per the comprehensive plan, town centers, secondary growth centers are Charlotte Hall, New Market, Mechanicsville, Hollywood, and Piney Point. Urban and patterned form designed for moderately intense residential, commercial, and industrial development, supported by provision of community facilities and services. Use type 74, restaurant, fast food, an establishment that offers quick eat in or take out food service which is accomplished through a limited menu of items already prepared and held for service or prepared, fried, grilled quickly, or heated in a device such as a microwave oven. Orders are not generally taken at the customer's table. Food is not served at the same table or counter where the food is consumed, and food is generally served in disposable wrapping and containers. Use type 115, drive through services, facility for providing services to persons remaining in automobiles. The public notice for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in the Southern Maryland News on June 24th and July 1st. The property has been posted in accordance with CZO requirement section 21.3.3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit one. The agenda was posted on the website on July 5th. The Concept Site Plan was reviewed at the TEC meeting held on February 23rd, 2022. Sorry about that. The use of restaurant, fast food, and drive through are permitted uses in the town center mixed use zoning district. For all non-residential multi-family residential projects that require major site plan approval, a concept site plan shall first be approved by the Planning Commission before the major site plan may be processed for approval by the Planning Director. This is a public hearing which enables all who wish to provide information to the Planning Commission. In order to approve the Concept Site Plan, the Planning Commission shall make the findings that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plans, may be served by adequate public facilities as required by section 70.2.2, will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, adequately developed recreational and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive zoning ordinance, is consistent with chapter 62 design objectives. This concludes the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit two. Sue Greer and Nelson Orocho are here representing the applicant. Are there any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Brandy. Yes ma'am, y'all want to come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sue Greer of the Law Offices of Sue A. Greer, PC, on behalf of the applicant. It is my absolute pleasure to be here in St. Mary's County tonight to present this case. I live and work, just so you know, in Charles County, but because I have family and business in St. Mary's, I am routinely in and out of your county on a daily basis and very much enjoy coming to have the opportunity to appear before you. With me this evening is Nelson Orocho of Bay Engineering, Jackie Chandler of Traffic Concepts is also present. Because this use generated less than 50 trips at peak hour, no traffic impact with study was done, but out of an abundance of caution, we do have Ms. Chandler available to answer any questions that you may have. Justin Rosemore, who represents the applicant, is on his way. He is not here yet, but he will probably be here shortly. And tonight, we're pleased to present a project which redevelops the site known as 300-303 Notch Road in Charlotte Hall, Maryland, which will redevelop the Charlotte Hall motel into a Chipotle restaurant with a drive through. But the drive through is a little bit unique because most of your drive throughs, as you know, you pull up, you place an order, and you get it. In this case, the drive through is for orders that have been placed in advance, so it facilitates the expedient pickup of food. Something a little bit different. St. Mary's County will be leading the way in this, so that's pretty neat. I know that your time is precious, that you've had some long hearings, and that it's a beautiful summer night, so what I am going to do is turn this over to Mr. Orocho, then answer any questions you have, and hopefully have the opportunity to sum up. And at the end, I will be asking for a favorable report from the commission. Thank you so much. So with that, Mr. Orocho, I will turn it over to you.
Again, my name is Nelson Orocho. I'm with Bay Engineering. I'm a professional engineer and managing this project. And so, the first slide or what's on the screen there is the proposed condition of the site. There's the existing site, which is the hotel, which will be demolished and will be reconfigured and reconstructed to the Chipotle site. Overall, I think it's pretty simple in the sense it's a redevelopment site. The site will be changed within the limits of the LOD, which is the lease area in this case, 1.78 acres. And the intent is to, you know, make the site better. We're going to provide stormwater management. There is no stormwater management within the 1.78 acres, so there'll be environmental site design to the maximum extent practical, ESD to the MEP. And also enhancements with regard to, if you wanted to go to the landscaping, the color rendering, I think has that. And you can see there, the trees are outlined there, and you can see with the front buffer that we're providing, that's required, the 65 feet, and the landscaping both on the edge and internally, that it's really going to be a nice site. And enhancement there. And you can see even the area in the rear of the parking, the last bit of parking, there's a stormwater management device, and then you have that grass area there. So, really, not much more to say unless there's really specific questions. We meet our requirements for stormwater management. Again, the traffic was mentioned. Public water, sewer is a private onsite because the hotel rooms, or keys, as they call them sometimes, were more as the existing use than the restaurant use. The usage for the sewer has actually decreased, and it's well within the parameters of the MDE permit for the total allotted use for the site. So, and, yeah, and I guess other than that, I'll kind of stop and let you ask some questions.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Van Kirk?
Yeah, I always got to come in.
I know you do.
Explain that southern entrance.
The existing entrance?
I'm assuming, what's going to be there? What's, this drawing, I'm assuming, is what's going to be there?
Yes, sir. So, as far as you're coming northbound on 3 Notch Road, and you had that existing entrance there, and then you would be able to turn in, obviously to your left, or to the north, into the site. You can't go along the front because it's one-way circulation along the front there, between the front of the building and the buffer, so you'd have to go to your right, and then you'd be able to park there in that area, and then be able to go then into either the pickup lane, we'll call it, or come back out on the more easterly entrance there to go back around out, or go into the development further into the shopping center. And then, of course, we have the bypass that goes, you have the drop off in the bypass to the north that goes out and then exits out the top. So, we maintain the, to your question, I think we maintain the south entrance that was there, left it. That entrance that you see, it almost mimics the hotel entrance, as far as the way it's angled even, and how it comes into the site. So that was maintained.
Is that just going to be an in? Because the rear looks like it's a...
No, if you look at the arrows, it's both an in and out.
In and out.
Both are in and outs, yeah, yeah. Because when, if people aren't entering the drive through, and they're just coming in, they come in, they walk in, they can then get out and come back out that entrance without having to go all the way around and going out the exit only, so.
Just didn't look that big.
Ah, okay, no, it is, it's 24 foot wide.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Let me ask you a question about the drive through.
Sure.
Being unique, and I had it marked in here. I mean, how's the driver going to know when they pull in there? I mean, are there going to be big signs out on 235 that says, you know, it's, how are they going to know when they pull around to think they're going to sit there and order food?
They have the signs that say pre-order pickup only, so it'll be signed. Chipotle sent us their standard package of what they have for signage, and so they will be signed to be only directed as far as those people who are picking up. Also, they may get the hint when they don't see a pickup window, you know, like in the other development, you have the window where you pre-order. There's no pre-order window, so they would have had to have called it in and so forth. I guess if somebody gets stuck there, I'm sure they'll be polite to tell them, please go back around and order, but it'll be signed, sir.
How do they, I mean, if 15 people call in, you know, within 10 or 15 minutes, a couple people order in line, how do, you get somebody that's pulled up there, whose order is 10 behind other people waiting to pick up, how to...
That's a good, that's...
Understand how this works?
It's one of the reasons we asked for a waiver, and staff gave it to us. We have six spaces that are in the back that are specifically for, kind of, you want to call it overflow, if it gets that. So there's the spaces allotted, so that if they find out that they need to wait, they can then pull into those spaces, wait, and then pick up. Also with COVID and so forth, a lot of restaurants are having people where they just don't want to see people. You know, they'll come in, they want to order, just have it handed to them at the window and go. And that's also what those six spaces, it's a kind of a dual purpose, right? It's for what you spoke about specifically, which is a good question, and then also for those people who pull in and just want to be handed their food and then get out. Giant food, you know, everybody has that now, yeah.
Having traveled with my daughter this weekend for the first time in a long time, we pulled up, I won't say to what establishment, but she said, I said, well, you know, I'm not waiting in line for this. She says, well, just pull up, I've already paid for it and everything. She goes up with her phone, shows us barcode, they handed a bag, and she walks out the door, and I'm like, well, I'm done. I haven't had anything like it, and it doesn't matter if you're in line whenever, they got your order sitting in there waiting for you, and she'd already paid and everything. You know, go figure.
I know people do it, it just seems like it would be very confusing if I place...
I thought the same.
Drive up there, and it's not ready, I guess somebody's going to say, order 1, 2, 3's not ready. Pull around in the spots, and then do they bring it to you, or then people have to get back in line?
I think they would bring it to you at that point.
Have you seen Chick-fil-A? It's the same concept.
But there's nobody outside at this one, I'm assuming.
Oh, they do tell you to go. Get out of line and go. Park in the back.
I'm just curious, I'm never, I'm not an online order person.
We missed that. That's why I'm... Van Kirk, I missed it. I was like, well, I'm done, you know.
COVID has forced that. COVID has forced that are the way we do things. It really has. It's, you know, and some people, they, I kid around, but, you know, Chair was speaking about his daughter. My daughter, she can avoid contact. She will, she does, she doesn't want to deal with it.
Yeah, it's a good concept. I just didn't quite know how it was going to work with if 10 cars were pulling them at the same time and eight orders aren't ready yet, so that's all. Okay, that's all I have right now.
I guess, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, you can still go, is there a line to go and order food?
You can still go in.
You can go in, but there's no, the drive through is strictly for the pre-order.
That's correct, that's correct, yep.
Okay.
If you go to Chipotle, the one that's in the park now, they don't have a drive through window, but they have a Big Ben, like a rack where they have your orders waiting for you. So now this is just...
When you go in?
Yeah, so, and it has your name on it, you just walk up, find your name.
Metal shelving, about three shelves, four shelves high, and it's all right there.
Panera Bread does the same thing.
I was going to say, it's very much like Panera.
I'm going to have to get out more often.
They do a ton of pre-orders. People just come in.
Right, or you can park, same concept, you can park and they'll bring it out to you.
Well, this is really just, this is really just addressing something that other establishments actually already do.
Yeah.
If you're in line and you can't get your food, they ask you to pull forward, and then someone bolts out the front door. Except this situation is there's a place for them to go, so that's not a bad thing.
I'm going to have to get up there.
They do it with McDonald's. I get, I got a CVS app, I mean, I got apps all over my cotton picking phone there, where you pull up, you show them the barcode.
Van Kirk, you and I.
Your CVS order comes out the window, and you go goodbye. I'll take you around, Howard, and show you.
Appreciate it. I need adult supervision. And y'all are going to use Hancock Drive as your main corridor there on the side, and it'll have two entrances off of that.
That's correct.
I just brought it up on the GIS so I could get my head straight on that.
The back, yeah, Hancock is there, yep.
You can still go out that back waiting for you.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what's nice about it, it really isn't a, there's nothing overloaded, right?
Yeah, I mean, you got several ways to get in and out.
Correct, yeah.
Hit that light if you want to go back up.
How close is that entrance, the exit out onto 3 Notch to the entrance of the McDonald's?
The, where the cars would sit, let's say, example, the cars would sit, they'd be about 30 feet apart where the actual radius is, because you can see the radiuses come, they're almost touching in the sense of you have the radius coming, working to the north, and then the radius that's coming in, then starting from there. So they're almost touching there, so they're, you know, so it depends on your perspective of which, you know, the pure entrance, you know, as far as they're in and the out, you know, it's 40 feet apart where the cars will sit. If the two cars are sitting there, you're talking about, you know, about 40 feet. As far as, once you get on the road, it's pretty easy for them to roll into. They haven't had enough food, they can nice and smoothly roll into McDonald's and keep going.
Yeah, the only reason why I mention is, I'm not sure if you've ever had to merge over and try to get over in that, to get over to that McDonald's. I can't imagine trying to navigate that with a lot of traffic coming out of the Chipotle.
Yeah, we have a stop sign, so it's a stop condition, so there is a stop sign on our site plan so that, you know, they should be stopping, right?
Right.
Okay.
Is there anything else we could do to kind of help make that safe? Because, I mean, I understand the stop sign is there, but I mean, most of the time, they're going to be looking left anyway, and you got a lot of people. That's a very congested area right there at times.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if we were to, I mean, we could push the entrance slightly south, you know. The people coming out there would then be Boeing, you know what I'm saying? You know, they come out from a straight line, or they come out the line, but we could probably shift it down if we, you know, if the board wanted us to move it 10 feet to make it a little safer, we could probably shift it down. It wouldn't affect anything as far as our buffers and everything, drainage would be fine. I wouldn't want to go anymore because then you have the people who are coming and making it, so it's this happy medium, but I mean, if we, if you pulled it 5, 10 feet away and just had a little more gapping, let's say, between the two, I mean, we could accommodate that, that wouldn't be a problem. If the board would make that a condition, that would be fine.
What's the other vendors that's around you?
Yeah, but State Highway would have, right, would always have the last say because we're on to their, in the road, but I'm sure that would be accommodated, yes.
What's the other vendors that's on the same stretch? You have your self, your vendors, your other establishments.
Oh, so to the north is McDonald's, and to the south is Burger King, along the immediate frontage there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, between that Farmer's Market and Golden Beach Road, getting over there is a, you got to watch, you know, they're supposed to wait till they get up to the little, where it's painted, to turn on Golden Beach Road, but they shoot up that side.
Yeah.
So bad, all through there before that, you know, they're not supposed to ride in that no lane, it's not a through lane like they think they, and they go up and turn in Golden Beach Road, I see that every week, every weekend when I'm up that way, but it's, like I say, there's nothing you can do, because there's so many turnoffs there for all the businesses, you can't put any stanchions up or anything, so.
Mr. Gotch, can I ask you a question? Absolute. I know you can't speak for the State Highway Administration, but I can get a good opinion out of you. I know in some places up there, they have what I call collapsible poles on the side of the road that would like direct you to turn, things like that, especially in the median. You know, it keeps you in your lane, and I know they're made of rubber, and if somebody runs over them, they flop, do whatever they're supposed to do. Is that something that, when they were talking about people shooting up that side of the road, I don't think any, I don't think McDonald's or Burger King has them because at this time, they're kind of far apart, and the hotel's been closed for, I don't know how long, right good while, for, you know, never had any traffic when it was in its heyday. Would the, if, I don't know if we can make a condition, because like you say, State Highway Administration's going to tell them what they want. I mean, and we talked about just a second ago, moving the entryway a little bit south, or the exit side of it, a little bit south to stay away from that, but could those collapsible things be put, I'll say like where they're, right before Hancock Drive, and this is just your opinion, to keep people from, like I'll say, shooting up that side of the road?
Yeah, I don't think State Highway would do that.
Yeah.
They've avoided it. I mean, it's been that way for years and years. It's same way on 235 if you're going to the Wendy's and the Walmart.
The applicant could actually ask then, couldn't they? I mean, to me, it would behoove them, it would help them out to slow people down that are trying to scoot up there, you know, to slow them down to go into their Hancock-type road entrance. You know, if the State Highway says no, they say no, and if they say yes, they'll say yes.
A note and say that you guys had asked the question, would you be willing to entertain doing that?
I mean, they have good entrance, they have Hancock Road, and then if you get on that street, you have two entrance, exit and entrances on that, and then you have the entry, I mean, the exit out onto 235, and you actually have one, you know, in the rear that they'll be able to use.
The reason I say they probably would not do that is just because of the travel. Still posted 50 miles an hour through there, or 55, and you need the deceleration distance to go from that speed limit to the right turn speed. And I don't think, with the entrances all along that roadway, I don't think they would put a barrier up, so you have to come in really hot and then hit the brakes hard to...
Just an idea. I'm surprised it's still 50. I've never looked to see what the speed is, because I'm afraid to take my eyes off the road when I'm going through there. So, it's just, it was just a thought.
Yeah, we can ask if you would like us to ask.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's not going to hurt the applicant, and it might even help them, you know, just to get people to slow down a little bit so that they can get in there a little bit safer. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Chairman, you can still come in from the, what's called the access road on the back.
Yeah.
Correct, so you can go in there like you do with Wendy's.
Correct.
Popeyes further up. I mean, a lot of them use that road back there.
They'll take the exit.
I never turn, because unless I'm in my big truck, and then they won't, then they won't jam me too hard because they realize I'm bigger than they are, but I use the light, I'll go all the way down, circle, and come back. It's just too chancy.
Any other questions to the applicant? All right, I'm going to close it down then, and I'll open it up to public testimony if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions or statements for the applicant, they can come up now. We didn't have anybody sign in this evening. Going once, twice, sold on that. Okay, we'll close public testimony and open it back up if there's anything you'd like to...
Just to very briefly hit your standards of the Planning Commission, we would request, based on the presentation and all the materials that the Planning Commission has in the record, that you would favorably approve the Concept Site Development Plan. I believe that there's ample evidence that it is consistent with your comprehensive plan and your TMX zoning. It achieves the goal, I think it's 4.12. I took a little walk through the county's comprehensive plan of redevelopment, and in particular redevelopment of an infill parcel within the growth area, which...
in particular, redevelopment of an infill parcel within the growth area, which is called out in the comprehensive plan. It also, again, meets the purposes and is a permitted use within the TMX zoning. With respect to adequate public facilities, I think the record and the approvals by the county and the various departments demonstrate its compliance with adequate public facility. It, with respect to the promotion of health, safety, and welfare of the general public, again, this is a redevelopment site, it's exactly what you wanted to see on a site like this. It will significantly reduce your impervious surface, provided updated stormwater management in this area, and redevelop the site in an area that is designated for redevelopment and growth. As for adequately developed recreational and other community amenities, it's really a repeat of what we just said. It's redevelopment, it's what you wanted to happen on this site. It is significantly reducing the impervious surface and providing, as you can see, a picture's worth a thousand words, and when you look at that picture and you compare it to the existing impacted site, which is 100% impacted, you see the beautiful landscape, and you see the redevelopment and the benefit that's going to bring to the community, as well as being consistent with your Chapter 2 design objectives. Finally, again, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity. Mr. Orocho has done all the heavy lifting tonight. I've really been his emcee, but would like to thank you for the warm reception, and in particular, would like to thank the county staff for their warm reception and help this evening as well. And with that, we would request that the Planning Commission approve the concept site development plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board for deliberations, if there are any discussion before we make a motion.
I like the 10 feet.
Excuse me?
I like the 10 feet separation, like trying to make the adjustment there with the exit.
If you'd like to put that in part of the motion.
I can't hear it.
10 foot.
We're talking about the 10-foot movement of the exit going onto Three Notch, where you said it wouldn't really bother much, just separating the exit from the entrance of the adjacent property.
So, proposing moving the right in, right out 10 feet south?
No.
No, the exit.
Oh, that's only an exit, I'm sorry.
Only the exit, yeah.
Yeah, just the exit, 10 foot south.
Gotcha.
Right, so it's not right there on top of the, on top of the McDonald's entrance.
So whoever makes the motion, just make that part of the, the Second Amendment.
I hate to be interrupt, just subject, of course, to SHJ.
Please come to my...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a question I have, because...
Subject to SHJ.
And we will put that in a motion.
It's approved.
You can make a condition, and you just say, subject to SHJ.
Subject to SHJ approval.
Subject to SHJ.
All right, boss.
BJ, you put the motion up.
I know you're in that last, you're in that last lap, come on.
It's my first time doing this, let's see. I'd like to, in the matter of, in the matter of concept site plan, CSP 220023, Chipotle, Charlotte Hall having accepted, the staff report and having made a finding that the objectives of Section 60.6 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance have been met, and noting that the reference project has met all requirements for the concept approval, I move that the concept plan be approved with the following conditions. Any road improvements required by the state and county must be concurrent with the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
And B.
And B.
Move.
Movement of the exit onto Three Notch, 10 foot south.
Subject to...
Subject to SHJ approval.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Ms. Robert. Okay, okay, going to go down to roll call again. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Ms. St. Clair?
Aye.
Mr. Van Kirk?
Aye.
Ms. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
No, so vote aye. Okay, thank you, folks, for coming for us this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Balchin, good luck, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck, Andy.
We'll see you on the road, okay? Appreciate everything you brought to us. Is there any other business this evening? Have a motion to adjourn?
Vote adjourn.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are adjourned.
Next week.
Oh, and before we leave, Oak Crest has withdrawn their application for the hearing that they had coming up, so since we didn't have to continue anything from tonight, Mr. Hunt's going to give us off the next hearing, going to give us a night off on the 25th. We appreciate it. You got surprised at first.
Listen to updated schedule?
I will, I'll definitely.
Okay.
It's the next one.
I have a question for you.
No, we won't have anything else in July.
You guys do these presentations.
Come back in August.
The presentation the other day with regard to economic development.
Sticks in my mind for some reason.
You know, portion of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Did the presentation, can you guys, these presentations?